We started. Welcome to our June 6, 2023 Regular Board of Education meeting. May we please have a roll call?
Sandra Bradford.
Here.
Angela Wilcock. Ooh, gosh, I'm so sorry.
It was a while ago.
Hi, must have changed it and then went back. Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Lea Colister Lazari.
Here.
Erin Chanding.
Here.
Katie Carum.
Here.
Steve Wang.
Here.
Diana Clapton.
Here.
All right, why don't you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America. Intuitively public, justice stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I will jump right into my report. So happy summer, everyone. Thank you for being here. Last weekend was Barrington High School graduation, and it was just magical. My favorite night of the year continues to be so. We also had, in the past couple of weeks, we had several kickoffs at the last schools for the referendum, as well as ribbon cuttings at the high school. And they were, all events were very well attended, and the weather was perfect for all of them. So it was really exciting time. We held our board workshop last week, but we didn't get very far into our agenda. So we've already, I think we've got a tentative date to continue our discussions on June 28 in the afternoon, late afternoon. So please, board members, get, respond to that survey if you haven't already, to make sure that any topics that you want to make sure we get discussed will be on the agenda on June 28. And we did not even get to our admin committees, so we'll, we'll talk about those as well. One action I had was a new introduction to public comments, so we'll, we'll give that a try today and see how that goes. And I just want to recognize that June is Pride Month, so a shout out to celebrate our proud community members, staff, and students. And one quick public service announcement is that Railroad Crossing at Cook and, Lake Cook is going to be out for about 10, 10 or 12 days. So starting on Monday, June 12th, so watch out for that.
Which one, Sandra?
At Lake Cook in Cook, in downtown. So it's going to be closed for quite a while, so I'm sure that will impact some of the traffic with summer school and so forth, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments or feedback on my report?
What were the exact dates, Sandra, that, that like?
Monday, June 12th at 9:00 a.m., and it will end on Friday, June 23rd at 5:00 p.m. And the village will have signs posted. Okay, so I wanted to try out my new public comment introduction. However, no one has signed up for a public comment. So is there anyone that wanted to address the board? Hearing none, thank you, board, for giving me that great feedback, so.
Save your comment for next time.
I'll save it for next time.
It's in suspense.
All right, so Dr. Winkelman, let's turn it over to you.
All right. Slide show up. So many fun activities as another school year was wrapped up and came to a close. So I picked a few things to share tonight with our community. On May 24th, we had our incubator EDU pitch night, and this was actually the 10th anniversary of the program here in Barrington. And when I think about, you know, we, we talk about District 220 as a destination district. I think our incubator program is one of the things that does set us apart as a school district. The program started right here in Barrington and has now grown nationally and internationally. So a couple elements that I think really with this program demonstrate authentic learning, when you think about the problem solving and the teamwork and the communication skills and so forth. And it was certainly on display on May 24th, 24th. Want to thank our instructor, Hogs, has been with the program all 10 years, and you see him pictured here with his, instead of a green jacket, like the Masters gave him a red jacket for Barrington. Congratulations on the 10th anniversary of the incubator program. And then congratulations, all the teams that night, phenomenal. Our, our students are amazing. If you've ever been to pitch night, to hear the different pitches, and they awarded two, two teams, Digimax and Doteki Brush. Both received sponsorship to support their programs. Other, the, the very next day, we did, as Sandra mentioned, we had some ribbon cutting ceremonies on May 25th, dedicating new spaces, not only to the high school, but really to our broader community. So a new baseball field, new multipurpose turf field, and the Fields of Dreams. These certainly, these spaces will serve the instructional needs of our students through our physical education classes every day, being able to get out on those new spaces in addition to our athletic teams, but also serving our broader community, our younger student athletes that participate here locally in the program. Wanted to give a shout out there. And then, you know, we're also doing quite a bit of building still in, in, in 220. So I wanted to highlight the high school with my report tonight. On the left is a, a rendering that we saw almost two years ago when we were in the design phase, and now when you think about the reality of that's a real image taken recently of our high school, that new addition is really starting to take shape. And just a reminder, you know, this will provide us with quite a bit of flexibility to our programming at the high school. Additional flexible classroom spaces are part of that new addition, expanding our cafeteria as well as making sure that the cafeteria in the new space can be a cafeteria where students can eat during the day, but also be flexible enough that it can serve as additional overflow or flexible learning spaces as well. And then I've received some questions, comments, and feedback about what is going on in front of Barrington High School. Boy, the construction has really picked up. So immediately as school ended, they have just transformed the front. I mean, the tennis courts immediately were torn out and a ton of earthwork. So I wanted to make sure that our community understood that the plan, just a couple highlights, so you can see where it's at right now, it's really torn up, but then the goal is to put it all back together for the start of school. And on the right, you can see the elements of expanded parking spots, so additional parking, a new drive lane, so you do not have to navigate back around the building, you can actually navigate in front of the building. And then located in G, you'll see that there's accessible parking and drop off for our small buses, and if we have emergency services, like an ambulance or, we're much closer to the building to access and provide that emergency service in a more efficient and close proximity manner. So, you know, there's a lot of work out there. The goal is to really address those three areas of need in front of the high school. That's what's going on. As mentioned, it was the end of the school year for our students, and, you know, I think the senior walks that we started a number of years ago, this really highlights some of the feedback we heard during our, our framework 220 of taking advantage of being a unit district. That does set us apart here in Illinois. Some districts are arranged by elementary and high school within one community separately. With us being a unit district, our seniors going back and being able to visit their elementary schools, be a role model for the younger learners, as well as being able to reconnect with educators that have them in the, the early years, I think is a special moment. Tons of smiles, tons of good times, and I, I took the picture actually in the center there, that is a student that was getting autographs of the older students. And to see our older, our seniors actually obliging and coming up and talking to her and signing is, this is again, another really good example of the power of a unit district that I thought was worth noting tonight. In addition, graduation, as President Bradford mentioned, always a highlight. Just listening to Mr. McWilliams share all of the accomplishments, you know, these students certainly have a bright future. Also wanted to notice that, note that that was our first class of students in our Chinese Inversion Program graduated with the class of 2023. And then just a quick wrap up, we have a ton of things to be proud of when I reflect on this past school year, so I thought I would just highlight a few. We celebrated our theme for the school year of "We Belong 220," pictured there in the center with our staff. We earned the Meritorious Budget Award from ASBO. We hosted another Fine Arts, put on a Winter Wonderfest during the wintertime. We continued to engage our community with "Join Us for Java." We continued to offer more Career Pathway endorsements for our students here in Barrington by expanding the Horticulture, Greenhouse, Environmental Science, some of which will be discussed tonight. And then since 2015, District 220 has reduced energy costs by 20%, saving the district And then just a couple more. So completed seven school projects through Build 220. I've said this before, but this was our busiest year to date, with the amount of schools under construction and being able to be delivered on time and within budget. A lot of work and effort went into that. We continued our work of strategic plan, diving deeper into our six priority areas. That also is on the agenda a little bit later tonight. We had Abby Wambach come and speak to our students and our community earlier this year. We continued to add safety and security features through our referendum, as well as our Safety and Security Committee. Flexible Learning, a new program, will be introduced at Barrington High School, that there was a lot of planning and a lot of participation this past school year to make that a reality. We sold Woodland, and we have a closing date next week for James Street, so wow, that's amazing. I thank our Board of Education and our administrators and staff. A lot of people spent a lot of time and a lot of leadership to make all of those things come true, so thank you, board. And then last slide, just elementary enrollment update. At your place, we again have the report. Nothing significant to note changes. We are continuing to monitor our second grade at Rose and three of our schools with our kindergarten program. Teresa will do a discussion item on enrollment at a July meeting, so we'll, we'll take a deeper look and a deeper dive and be a little bit more thorough with where we're at, but we continue to track where most of our sections at the elementary level are either within or under guidance, so we're, we're in good shape at this point. And that concludes my report, unless there's any questions.
Can I, I, I do think the front of the school was the top of town.
It was.
So I was asked, and I, I think you've been pretty, you, you can see it in the rendering, there is green space going back in, in front.
Can we go back to that slide?
I just want to clarify that for everyone.
I, I'm really glad you brought that up, because I didn't mention that, but that, I was asked that as well. So we're doing all those things. We're going to have more parking, we're going to have a drive lane, we're going to have increased accessibility. The very southwest corner of the property, Katie is correct, you can see a little bit of a layout of a, I don't know if that's soccer, lacrosse, and who else might be represented, I'm probably forgetting a sport there, but the lines are there. That corner will be preserved for athletic use, right, Mr. McWilliams?
There's ball arrest nets going up to protect the parking lot and Hart Road, and I just checked yesterday, and the goal is to have that growing grass by Port of July.
Oh, nice.
Right around Port of July, so it's ready for.
Awesome. So with the tennis court's gone, there might even be more green, maybe, close?
There's not, not with the amount of parking spots, but we were sure in the design to not lose the ability to have a full field for all those variety of, of sports and activities and have it fast, so. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, it's important, no, it's not all going away. It's torn up right now, no doubt, but it's going to come back, so.
Dr. Winkelman, just as a point of levity and to go along with the Field of Dreams ribbon cutting, you are offered to properly teach us how to do a windmill pitch? That's a standing offer, right?
It is, it is. I spent a lot of time with, yeah, pitching and girls softball and sitting on a bucket, and I am happy to help, I mean, if you want to pursue that.
I fortunately got a quick lesson, but I'm not sure I represented that lesson very well.
I think the students made us look a lot better than what our skillset showed.
They covered up our shortcomings.
Yeah, right?
So two questions and our comments about the parking. The first is, I think, more for Dr. Vine, but the entrance way will be signal ready if and when we get a signal, right?
Yes.
It's such, so we won't have to do any more remodeling once that does happen?
There, there may be some additional work on that, that exit or entrance right there, if we get to go ahead from the Illinois Department of Transportation, be able to install something. So that would be a conjunction with the work that would happen on this side of the street where we are right now, the district office, to be able to accommodate that. But essentially, the work is, it, it should be ready to go.
So this is a rendering, don't, don't assume that this is exactly.
That's correct, correct, yes.
And I'm sure Mr. McWilliams will be communicating with all the high school parents on what's expected with flow and where they should and shouldn't go, so it'll be pretty clear when the fall comes, correct?
Yes.
Want to reassure people.
I think we all just got this way.
There's too many choices here. We got to make sure that we still keep things pretty well organized, you know, for, for ingress and egress, so.
Mr. McWilliams and I have talked, no, it was just last year that they closed Hart Road for construction, and we had a lot of communication going out to the community. We'll replicate that process with what the new flow and expectations with the front of the building before school starts, so.
So one of the reasons that we're really driving to get this work done as quick as possible, one is so that we have that front field playable and usable in the fall. But just as importantly, as, as Dr. Winkelman mentioned, we want to be able to establish a pattern before school starts and not have to change it, because that's always a nightmare. So that would be the goal, and then once we have it, we'll communicate it as Dr. Winkelman mentioned.
Are we going to have a ribbon cutting for the sidewalk? I'm super excited about the sidewalk. And thank the village for like working to make that happen.
That's a great idea.
Because that's, that's a long time in the coming as well, for safety.
Yes.
It's lovely.
Actually, I think that would be nice to do something in partnership with the village, because that was.
That's a great idea.
That would be a great idea, yeah.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll cook something up.
Just to continue on, I don't really have a question, but just a comment, like, for the senior walks, the, all the, the seniors got to see the, the new classrooms and the new changes, it was pretty exciting, and even at Grove, we even had a former principal come back, because that was her last class. Dr. K came back and they played the grand, for all you Grove alumni out there, they played the grand prize game one more time. And Dr. K was her last cohort, is it how graduated. So it's exciting.
It was.
It was really great for all the schools to share everything that's been happening there.
A quick shout out to our eighth grade graduates, both, I, I only went to Prairie, but they was, while tidying the hut, they wore lovely ceremonies, so thank you to the administration for those also.
Excellent.
I went to Station and it was just as good as Prairie. I feel like I acknowledged that they were both there. Yes. Equally amazing.
Okay, so let's move on to informational reports. Any questions or comments? Okay, how about Board Committee reports? I know we at least had one committee, but it was referendum met.
Referendum Committee met, May 18th. This is actually our first board meeting.
Since then, yeah.
Since then. So as Dr. Winkelman's already said, most projects are complete. We're, you know, on time and on budget, which is phenomenal. Besides what you can clearly see outside with the parking lot at PHS, there's a lot of internal stuff going on, that's why we're not doing summer school there. So the front addition, the commons area, new nurses' office, new student services office, new test center, new culinary labs, new restroom, we're renovating our restrooms, and of course, the PE area and back, cardio and fitness and dance and, and a new auxiliary gym. So there's a lot of stuff going on inside that we can't see, but we will all enjoy and our students will enjoy once that is all done. As we've talked about before, the Fine and Performing Arts Center, we're in the kind of design process, and we're so excited that the community's been so involved. The, the last meeting was so well attended, and, you know, everybody's input is, is just so welcome, so we can really get some consistent, consistent feedback and, you know, make a plan that makes our community proud. And then just to review, North Barrington, Rose, Lines, and the Early Learning Center are what we'll be concentrating on this summer, besides, of course, the high school, because the majority is done, so we'll be looking for some changes at those schools, and they'll catch up to the other elementary schools and to have their, their renovations done. So we're still holding our breath on the parking lot signal. We're really hoping we're going to be able to do something and that maybe yet a year off. But again, referendum committee is very proud of all the staff that has, has done all the hard work, and we're very happy to see some fruits of our labor, so.
Policy Committee met. We welcomed Diana as our latest board member chairperson, and also Teresa Reiki as our new leader after Doc, Dr. Winkelman kind of stepped off to other duties, and she did a fantastic job. So you'll be hearing more from us later for a first reading of board policy, but we had a very productive meeting, and Teresa ended us right at 8:59 a.m., so right on time.
Excellent. You guys were very busy, as everyone will hear very soon.
Yes.
Okay, so let's move on to the consent agenda. We have quite a bit on the consent agenda to, tonight. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, and I will definitely read through everything.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any questions, or make sure you see the revised personnel report, and I will read through what we've got there. If anybody's got any questions, just let me know. We have minutes from May 16th, both opened and closed. We have several finance reports, the school treasurer's bond for, for the school, for this past, for the, excuse me, for the 2023-2024 school year. And I'd like to acknowledge the gift for Sunny Hill from the Daughters of the American Revolution of 1,600 summer reading books, so very exciting. Thank you very much for that, for that donation. I've already mentioned the revised personnel report. We also have minor policies, just as a reminder, for minor policies where we're just updating references in the footnotes and things like that, we don't take them through first reading. These are just minor updates. We have the following policies that had minor updates. For 440, excuse me, 440 debt management, 5285 drug and alcohol testing for school bus and commercial vehicle drivers, 6 to 10 instructional materials, 870 accommodating individuals with disabilities, as well as minor updates to 6135 accelerated placement program, 820 community use of school facilities. We also have our Student Discipline Committee report, our hazardous crossing resolution, as well as our list of authorized depositories. That was an awful lot for our consent agenda. Any questions or comments? All right, let's do a roll call.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Lea Colister Lazari.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Erin Chanding.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Let's move to our action items. Do we have a motion to consider the approval of the Barrington High Do we have a motion to consider the approval of the Barrington High School Athletic Program donation agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Do you wanna just give us a quick overview of this one and maybe some more coming?
Yeah, absolutely. So the agreement that's on the agenda tonight as an action item, we have board policy and procedures as to how we enter into agreements when it comes to advertising here in the district, and the manner in which that advertising can be displayed. This contract represents advertising for a advertising windscreen panel out at the Fields of Dreams, similar to an earlier one. I suspect that with the beautiful facilities out there and a lot more traffic this summer, we'll start to see more of these coming in as opportunities to have advertising at that space. Dr. Bynne, anything to add?
I, I agree, and I hope that your prediction is spot-on and certainly room, and we love the engagement with our community to be able to support the program that we do.
All right, and any other questions?
Will this be a fixed rate for the, a three-year term then? Two, is it 2,500 per year for? Okay.
And there were several options, right, at different, at different values, and we could, maybe if you could just include that again, just as a refresher for us, so we know what to expect on your turn, in your, in your weekly. All right, let's have a roll call.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Diana Clopton?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the strategic plan as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right. I imagine we wanna talk about this for a minute or two?
Yeah, for sure. So at your place, you actually have, in addition to what's attached to the agenda in electronic format, you have the plan as presented. So just to remind the board and our community, you know, we spent over a year involving the community of stakeholders, which included students, parents, teachers, staff, local leaders, our community partners, which really led to the development of the document that you have in front of you this evening. I wanna thank our board for its leadership and guidance along the way over the past year. And then I want to have a special thank you to Samantha Scheinman, who actually took all of that feedback, all of that content, and then turned it into a professional visual representation that we can display on the website, as well as having copies of this available in our school offices here at the district office, so that we continue to have where we're headed as a district available to our community. Questions? This is the same content that we've been discussing as a board and with our stakeholders for over the past year. It was an opportunity for us to pull it together into a consumable.
I think it looks fantastic.
I don't know if this is the time, I'm not questioning this at all, I think it's beautiful. But reading through this brought up some questions for me. So I'm just wondering, where are we with flexible learning at the high school? Do we have a cohort? Are we, are we, you know, well into it, or are we still in the beginning stages on that?
So that's actually our discussion item for our very next meeting.
Oh, next meeting, okay, okay, that's fine.
But to preview and just to remind everybody, our team has been very busy working with our students and our staff, so students that are interested in that coursework, as well as our staff that are making commitment to instruct those classes. Steve, anything else you wanna share with that process? I don't wanna let the whole presentation, you know, where you're at, but any, any other updates beyond that of we, we've got a sense of where we're headed, we have student interest?
We've got a significant, a significant amount of student interest to be able to support. We've established a space, but pictures of almost a completed space, probably ready for the next meeting. And we're just in the process of analyzing students that are interested, what their needs are, what their graduation requirements are, so we can build some seminars and some coursework to fulfill their needs. So all of those things are things we plan to highlight in the school.
And I, I don't wanna steal your thunder, so I didn't realize that was the case. My second question is full-day kindergarten? Are we looking at a year from now, or is that being too optimistic? I realize there's a lot we have to do, I just didn't know, just wondering where we were on that.
Yep, so if the board adopts this tonight, part of our work during our executive council retreat and our planning this summer is to put things together that we'd like to bring back to the board immediately in the fall, like right away in August, to start talking about kindergarten and those items, and where do we intend to have based on these objectives.
And I believe there's state legislation too that looks likely to pass that would mandate full-day kindergarten by '27, '28, right?
Yeah, we have time on that one.
We have some time. I'm hoping we beat it.
And then the last one, just again, just from looking at this and asking a question, is with respect to social media, I, I don't know, as, as we're starting to think about back-to-school night, if we're planning like a parent-university or anything we can do to kind of help parents who are asking for help on how to handle social media, and what they can do to help their kids, and how to make limits, and is that also kind of on the view or on the?
So let me just, yeah, maybe just give a little bit more context. So tonight, the board is contemplating the priorities and the objectives. Our administrative team and I just, we, we had our district leadership teams, so all of our administrators in the district just met for our annual end-of-year meeting. They've seen this, we had conversations about, you know, there's 20-plus objectives in here. We're not going to be able to do all of them in, you know, in the first year. But we will take the board's feedback when you gave us direction on the priorities, like the things we're mentioning right now, like making sure that flexible learning program at the high school, full-day kindergarten, you know, you gave us that direction. Those are gonna be things that you're gonna see immediate action steps on as we start to engage the community, as well as our administrative team. There are some others that maybe we haven't talked about, but it does make sense for us to start to implement so that we can get to the next objective, right? Some need to happen before others. We will work this summer and then bring that next step of actually, how are we implementing these things to the board when we come back in the fall? And then, thinking ahead, we'd probably do a check-in mid-year, end of the year, so that there's regular updates on the progress that we're making. That's the work that the exec council team is gonna do this summer.
And I'm sorry if I'm putting the cart before the horse.
No, it's good questions.
I know there's a lot on here, those are just three things that kinda jumped out at me, so I just wanted to kinda see where we were with that, so I apologize.
This sets the direction, and then our administrative team is gonna then put the work together of the structure, the timing, the updates, when the board can provide opportunities for feedback and further leadership and direction than what's been offered thus far.
Thank you.
No problem.
I'm sure this varies, but how often are the planning teams meeting?
So it'll, it'll depend by team, right? I think the, the team that's working on the kindergarten, they're gonna be meeting
A lot more.
A lot more. Some that are just establishing baseline will be collecting information, and they may not have the same cadence or need to meet quite as often. But I think some of the teams are gonna really hit the ground running, and some will be teeing up to do that work next. Because like I said, we will not, to be clear, be working on, I think there's 28 or 29 objectives, so some teams won't be meeting at all yet, they may just be doing the baseline, the research and so forth.
And some could be as much as like weekly or something like that.
And I, and I've said this in, in previous meetings, I think there's also opportunities that this won't be strictly a district initiative with our educators and our staff and our administrators. I, I believe there's gonna be opportunities for us to then do additional community engagement and have participation with some of these that we, we cannot accomplish on our own, just like we couldn't do some of the outcomes with optimal time for learning solely in a vacuum, right? Like that was an example from our, our past one where we had a lot of stakeholder involvement. I would think that there's opportunities in here for us to do the same, like we talked about with some of our partnerships with our local hospitals and so forth, when we start to look at some of the health and well-being and taking advantage of those community partners.
What do you think the timing of that is, the community engagement?
Well, when our team meets and kind of determines which are the, which of the objectives that we're gonna pull forward and which ones we're gonna start working on immediately, then I think when I bring back that information to the board of here's now the action plan of diving into the work, I think that's the conversation I'd like to actually have with the board to say, here's who we believe are our community partners, and get additional feedback from the board on, have you considered, you know, these individuals as well? Or, you know, helping us round that out, and then what does that committee structure look like? Some can be somewhat informal, all the way to, we've had very formal charters in the past where the Board of Education has set, set aside and said, these are the type of members we would like representation from every elementary, we would like community leaders, we would like, you know, different stakeholders to be part of a group with very specific meeting expectations, conditions of what responsibilities they've had. You know, like enrollment monitoring committee is, is one of those that our district had in the past, where it was very specific of who was going to be on it, what the work would look like, what a recommendation to the board would look like, the timing of that, and so forth. So it could be very formal to more of just information gathering and, and having opportunities to just participate that way. I don't think it's a one-size-fits-all on how we do that.
So we'll have our next update at the end of, at the end of the summer?
I would think the September board meeting would make a lot of sense to do that. I think the August meeting before school starts, so it'd probably be the September meeting. We'll be getting school started probably will be the, but yeah, in September, bringing an update to the board. On more of the action, like what are we now doing, what are we implementing, where do we need some additional leadership and guidance from the board?
Excellent. All right, don't let that kindergarten group forget about space.
Yes, yes.
It wouldn't be a meeting if I didn't mention it. I'm very worried about space at elementary. If we need to update caserta, let us know that too. Okay, so are we ready for roll call?
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Diana Clopton?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have a motion to consider the approval of the BSEO job reclassification?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Winkelman, you wanna give us a quick overview?
Sure. So annually, the job reclassification committee meets and considers different changes to potential job categories. You have a memo here from, an update from that committee outlining three areas that the committee felt warranted consideration by the board, and then the board has the ability to then decide to approve or amend these, or not approve, these three job categories. And if you wanna get details or ask any questions, I'm gonna look to Mrs. Reiki to help add in that additional information.
Does anybody have any questions? We've been, we've been given a couple meetings to review this and ponder. And the total impact is just under $12,000 with reclassification on an annual basis. Okay, are we ready for roll call? Sounds like it.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Diana Clopton?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, board, let's move on to our discussion items. First up, I think we've got some guests here, is for the Hart Road Green Learning update.
Yeah, as our team is coming up, just a little bit of information. You know, we've had different ideas of what the Hart Road property could consist of for our district, and we use that term, but just to set expectations, the Hart Road property is the property that's on the west side of Hart Road, directly across from our stadium and our high school campus. And so for the past year, our team has been meeting with our teachers and our administrators, but also with our community members and organizations, and I thank those that are here tonight that have been participating over the past year. So our team will start to highlight both the educational needs as well as any additional conservation work and improvements to the property, and then we'll be looking for some guidance from the board. They have a couple of questions that they would like the board to consider and give direction.
Excellent.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. Before we get started with the presentation, I would like to recognize the folks in the audience who have put a lot of time, effort, and dedication into this process as it relates to learning and engagement and offering so much to the group and all that we've been able to accomplish. So if we could have the folks just say who you are and what your role is within this work, that would be great. Lucas, you wanna start?
Hi, everybody, Lucas Allen. I work for a project of the State Board of Education. I'm your Northeast Illinois Food and Agriculture and Environmental Sciences feels rep. So I provide onsite technical assistance to teachers, to school administrators, counselors. I'm the person who implements the strategic plan that the state has for food and ag education. So helping teachers with professional development, answering questions about curriculum, greenhouse updates, those sorts of things. So teacher recruitment, filling vacancies, helping prepare the industry to have enough career talent pipeline, at the end of the day, to build talent pipeline. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Kedzie, environmental science teacher, horticultural teacher, and biology teacher. Very nice. I'm Jeff McMahon, and I'm the same teacher that he just mentioned. Should've looked at me a couple of years ago, so we're just trying to get students involved doing real-world science and sustainability work, so.
Excellent.
Hi, I'm Adrian Salub. I helped with the restoration concept plan that we did, that we've been working on for a while now with the Hart Road Restoration Committee. Big into the environmental sciences, horticultural implementation, treating a farm as an ecosystem, permaculture specialization, whole systems farming, sustainable agriculture, design work, I've done some design work on some of this, these, these projects, works with the students and teaching them about these concepts and principles in horticulture classes and in environmental sciences. I work with Good Shepherd Hospital and Smart Farm and a few other organizations that work on these kinds of practices here in Barrington.
Adrian's a Barrington High School graduate for, from what year?
2006.
Went to what elementary school?
Upstreet School.
And what little school?
Prairie Mills School.
I'm Ben Rodriguez, I'm in Kedney High School, and I'm coordinating career pathways.
Last but certainly not least, Bob.
I'm Bob Lee with Barrington Area Development Council, but I'm also on the Flint Creek, Spring Creek watershed committee. We were involved with the Dreamway project over the last few years, so it's great to see an extension and the interest in improvement at Hart Road. It's all important following Flint Creek, right from Makers Lake all the way through the school, school property onto Hart Road and in Barrington Hills, so I'm excited to hear the plans.
And I'm so sorry, we had, we have a couple of folks in the back, I'd like to quickly acknowledge and have you introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Susan Lenz, nice to see someone you haven't seen in a while, and nice to meet those I haven't met. I bring to this, I'm, right now my position is Senior Vice President of Community Conservation for an organization like Forest Open Land. I've been in the conservation and environmental field for a number of years. Bringing to this just some history, see some folks that I've worked with at the high school, middle schools, with education and conservation, so excited for the passion for this project, so thanks.
So Sue has partnered, she's being modest, she, she's been partnering with the high school, particularly our environmental science classes for several years now, working on the Peterson Preserve and the, doing some soil sampling and creek studies out at Flint Creek, so. Yeah, so a lot more.
I left that position a year ago, Steve, so sorry.
I know, but, I know, but I'm, I'm looking back into the future, in the past, there's been a lot of this.
I was in watershed and all that stuff, so I'm excited to see this project work through the district, and I'm also a parent of the area, so.
Hi, Lynn, you have good timing. My name's Sarah Boska, I work for Blue City Geological Services, we're a restoration contractor out of Henry County, Illinois. So I'm a Barrington High School alumni, and parents are also Barrington alumni, since I graduated class 2013. And just really, my career has been shaped by, you know, growing up in Barrington, whether it was, you know, going out to the prairie with CFC as a kid, or, or seeing the prairie burn behind, from Barrington, third grade. the quarry burn behind. From Barrington, third grade, I distinctly remember that, seeing the fire fairies come out. We had to stand by, where it used to be bus pickup for that event, living in Tower Lakes and involved with their watershed work and things like that when I was in high school, and then taking environmental science. I kind of changed what I wanted to do as a career and in college, and have been so happy for it now. I'm also involved in the U.S. Deputy on Ecosystem Restoration Task Force, where one of the projects we've been working on is bringing jobs for youth and getting more people involved in the stewardship and restoration. So, so forth the commitment by this district and the youth of students into, you know, educational opportunities for them. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. So, our presentation is, of course, aligned with our mission statement, and as it relates to our strategic priorities, tonight's presentation is in most alignment with four of our priorities, which are community partnerships and communication, future readiness, personalized learning, and can't forget stewardship.
Thank you.
And the presentation tonight will be chunked into two parts. The first one, we'll provide you with an update on where we're at with our green learning initiatives in Barrington 220, and then with the Hart Road property update. So, as it relates to green learning, when we think of green learning through the construct of a career pathway, what we really want as it relates to green learning is to empower both students and the community to engage with local conservation efforts and sustainable cultivation of resources by providing equitable access to authentic learning opportunities. So, when we think about that, it's really in two strands, conservation being one strand and cultivation being the other. And what does the work entail, whether you're working under conservation or cultivation? It's really starting with the student learning experiences from a pre-K-12-plus perspective. We really want to ensure that we're operating as a unit district and optimizing our learning experiences for all of our learners. We want to take a look and deep dive with post-secondary skills as well as students' experiences. So, we'll talk about this a little bit later, but students engaged in these pathways are highly involved with team-based challenges, internships, and other work-based learning opportunities. We also have to consider space and facilities. So, you've heard a lot about the greenhouse over the past year, and tonight we're going to share with you some updates on Hart Road. Community partnerships, you just heard from the folks in the back about the, our great fortune of being geographically located where we're at to have such access to strong and dedicated community partners. And in terms of other outcomes, this is highly correlated and connected to our social-emotional learning as well as college and career readiness indicators for all of our learners. And green learning in Barrington 220 has evolved over the past several years, so just take a minute or two to talk about how it's evolved since the 2021 school year. So, in the 2020-2021 school year, the Horticulture Green Learning Program was about two to three sections with a total of 75 students. And when we think about the 23-24 school year and how it's grown in that short timeframe, we have over 225 students projected to take these pathway courses next year, which is huge growth in a short amount of time. And when we think about community engagement and student organizations, we've relaunched our FFA chapter. It's the first chapter in Barrington 220 since the 1950s, and I just shared with the team, FFA used to stand for Future Farmers of America, but it has since dropped that, and it's just FFA, which is really exciting for us. We have engaged with our K-5 learners with bringing our third and fourth graders over to the high school to engage in some field studies and soil studies, and the Ed Foundation has graciously supported us in revitalizing our greenhouse. So, we're really proud of the work that has happened over the past few years and are very excited about what is to come. And as it relates to the career pathway of agriculture, food, and natural resource, that's the umbrella. So, the Illinois State Board of Education provides us with what is called a model program of study. And so, what that means is that students are engaged in orientation or introduction courses. They're also engaged with skill development courses, which they take between their junior and senior year, along with capstone or advanced courses. So, courses that students are taking their senior year. And so, that the darker green band is students who are engaging in the conservation side of agriculture, food, and natural resources, and then the lighter green is the cultivation. And as we've shared with you before, we're just so excited, we're just going to keep sharing it. We are so happy that we have gotten approval from ISB to offer the career pathway endorsement in agriculture, food, and natural resources, and we're even more excited because Barrington is the first school district in the state to have students earn the career pathway endorsement in this area. And so, just to provide you with an example of what it looks like for a student who is engaging in a career pathway endorsement specific to agriculture, food, and natural resources. So, the first step is for a student to engage in some pretty deep career exploration and counseling. So, anytime a student wants to engage in a career pathway endorsement, we want students to find out what they want to do post-secondary, as much as we want them to find out what they don't want to do before they go off into a two-year, four-year institution and spend a lot of money and find out they aren't interested in horticulture or agriculture. We want them to find that out while they're in high school. So, they're supported by their counselor to develop a four-year course plan. We also want to ensure that all of our students engaged in career pathways are ready for college-level English and math. And so, one way for students to do that is to take our transitional English and/or math courses, so that when they graduate from Barrington 220, they go directly into credit-bearing math or English classes. Additionally, students who are engaged in a career pathway endorsement in agriculture, food, and natural resources earn six hours of early college credit. So, that means that they graduate from high school with both a high school transcript as well as a college transcript. So, we're very excited about that. Where the authenticity comes in, or part of where the authenticity comes in with this pathway, is the real-world experiences that students gain. In this career pathway, students are engaged in a minimum of a 60-hour internship throughout their experience in the career pathway, working with some of our community partners in this room and beyond to get that, those hands-on experiences. And then, all of that leads to their college and career pathway endorsement, which is a seal on their high school diploma. Don't know what this means. Should I just press okay?
Well, I don't think that's you. Because it's not here. It's on the TV.
It's only on one of the screens.
It's very exciting.
Clicker.
Look at these screens. Direct your attention to screens.
Thank you so much. So, when we think about the value of a student having a career pathway endorsement, there are really four main areas that adds value to a student's experience. First and foremost, it's the individual value that adds to a student's high school experience. It provides students with foundational career skills, workplace experiences, and ensures that they're college-ready in both English and math. It has local value, and like I said, where we're geographically located, we're so fortunate to be able to offer a career pathway endorsement in agriculture. It allows students, as well as the district, to network with our local professionals and tap into their experiences and expertise. It also allows us to gain additional community partners that we didn't necessarily know were out there. There is tremendous both state and national value to earning a career pathway endorsement. So, earning a career pathway endorsement could mean expanding scholarship and application benefits. So, one example, although not related to agriculture, is students who are earning a career pathway endorsement in education go straight to the final round of the Golden Apple Scholarship. So, that is one added benefit to a state perspective. And it helps students build a resume while they're in high school, which helps them with their post-secondary experiences and planning. And also, the spirit of the work. Engaging in a career pathway endorsement promotes a thoughtful approach to post-high school planning. So, instead of selecting your courses every year for four years, you are really intentionally planning for an experience throughout this career pathway endorsement. Now, I'm going to hand it off to Dr. Byrne.
Great. So, thank you, Dr. Byrne. So, we've talked about the Hart Road property in the past, Board, and looked at some ideas, so what we might be able to do with that property. This has been ongoing discussions for some time. We did, more recently, going back the last couple, three years, we did a wetlands restoration, or, sorry, a wetlands delineation analysis, and some other preliminary work to try to figure out what some options are. Since then, over the last year, we've had a great team of folks, some of whom are here tonight, along with some others, who've been engaged in some conversations about some restoration work. And so, want to talk a little bit about that, and I'm going to use some slides that have been prepared by Baxter and Woodman. We retained the services of Baxter and Woodman to do a restoration analysis and plan for the district to be able to consider as to what that might look like. So, I put this sort of filler slide here so that you'll be able to refer to, you'd see it as Baxter and Woodman stuff. So, when we go back to 2018, there is a Flint Creek watershed plan, and there was an update that was done. So, this is a document that existed prior to that, and this update identified potential projects that could be done within the watershed area. And the work that we're going to talk about is included in this plan, and that's important to note because it opens up the door for projects to apply for the Illinois EPA, the IEP-A 319 grants. And these grants cover 60% of the cost of the work. So, what we're going to talk about, again, is included within that area. And so, here it is, the project location is our property along with some adjacent property. And you'll notice that on the west side here, you can see the property lines in green, so this does include some area that is owned by neighboring property owners. It's about 38 acres, covers the main branch and the east and south branches of Flint Creek. As I said, this is an area that's noted as a critical area for improvement in the updated watershed plan. So, why would we even think about ecological restoration? There's really five reasons I've been listed here for you. The obvious one that jumps out is improving water quality. Another one that jumps out for us is at the bottom. I've tried to bookend this for you. Well, Steve Zimmerman from Baxter and Woodman really tried to bookend this for you. Provide education opportunities. It's one of the most important things that we think about here. And doing ecological restoration allows you to improve the conditions in the area as well as provide opportunities for our students. If you haven't been back there, I'm not going to encourage you to go. In my first year, I did have the opportunity to walk through, another administrator walked through, the Hart Road property as we're starting to talk about it and to think, what could we do with that property to help our students? It was crazy. Teasel taller than I am, and I'm a reasonably tall person, and, I mean, it was just crazy marching around back there. This was during cold weather season when these were taken, so it was a little more open. But this gives you an idea of what things looked like there. There are multiple steps that would be involved in doing some ecological restoration, so it's a handful of steps. The first one would be invasive tree and shrub removal. And it's, I know you can't really see it very well in the upper right-hand corner on the slide, it does lay out what would we be looking to remove, and really what percentage. For example, 100% of the box elders would be removed, but we would only remove 25% of the silver maples. So, and it goes on, you know, down the line, you know, toward the bottom, getting rid of all the deadfall, getting rid of alms. These are items that wouldn't naturally be in this area. So, the entire area of the property is noted for this because this work would take place over the entire project area. So, just, you know, as you look at it, it is, the piece on the left slides underneath the picture on the right. So, that's sort of how all this lays out.
Can you say that again, Dave?
The...
Which, because I was having, I was confused.
Yep, yeah. So, if you, if you take the piece on the left, it slides down underneath the piece on the right. Couldn't get it all there in one big picture.
So, the bottom on the left is Lake Cook Road? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to know where we were.
Exactly right. Yep. Yeah, and actually, the picture on the right, where you can see the blue Flint Creek that flows off to the right edge onto Hart Road, that's just opposite the football stadium right there. So, I'm sure you've been by there and you've seen where Flint Creek runs underneath Hart Road.
You're painfully aware of. Where the bridge was being constructed.
Where are the bridges? Yeah, some bridge work done.
Yes.
All right. So, step one would be removing things that shouldn't be there. All right. Step two would be restoring the channel and the stream bank. And there's a variety of pieces that would happen here. So, on the left, notably, there would be remeandering of the stream. So, basically, where it's straight right now, it would actually put in some nice little meanders back and forth, which would be pretty typical. Then, there's a variety of other pieces that you can see on the channel on the right. Some of it involves the bank and supporting the bank, putting in some riffles, some of those types of things. That would really get Flint Creek in great condition, not unlike the work that had previously been done that Mr. Lee referred to. All right, the third step would be native seeding. Different kinds of seeding would happen based on the conditions of the land. So, whether, you know, you have to really take a look at the conditions, the environmental conditions, and then put appropriate kinds of plants in those spots. So, I will note that Mr. McWilliams will talk a little bit about the upper right-hand corner of the right picture, talking about opportunities to do some permaculture projects. So, obviously, if we do some permaculture work, we wouldn't be putting in the seeds that would be appropriate for that particular area. It would be work that would be adjusted slightly to work in conjunction with any permaculture project, and then gradually transition into the restoration work that's being done here. Once the seeds are down, then there's erosion control, which is really a combination of putting down primarily mulch, but also some other cover in some areas. Then, there's, I really sort of love this little acronym here, three-year process, sleep, creep, leap, right? And in the first year, not a whole lot happens. In the second year, you start to see things start to spread out a little bit. And it's really in the third year where all of that native vegetation really takes off, and you really start to see what things are going to look like long-term. So, it's a three-year process there. And then, ongoing from that point in time, there is some work to maintain that area. Unfortunately, plants aren't really good at recognizing property boundaries. So, if you have, if we do a whole bunch of tezel eradication on our property, and there happens to be some tezel nearby, it may blow onto this property, and we've got to be able to engage in some work to try to make sure that all of the time and energy we put into the restoration stays in good condition. All right. Part of this with the grant also requires some signage that we would be obligated to put up in conjunction with the grant that would provide some information for our community about the work that's been done and its connection to the environment. So, I really think this is something else that promotes the educational nature of this type of a project. All right, now, the exciting part. All right, what are we talking about to do all this work? So, Baxter and Woodman put together a probable cost estimate along with a possible schedule. So, let me start with the big picture. This is estimated out to be something around... This is estimated out to be something around an $800,000 project, which the intent would be to apply for an Illinois EPA 319 grant, which would cover 60% of that cost. All right. So, that puts the, the grant portion at around $500,000, and the district portion just above $300,000. All right. So, that's big picture on the numbers. I'll talk again about that in just a moment. From a timing perspective, the, the grants are due August 1st. So, when we get to the end of our presentation, Board, we'll be asking you if you're supportive of this. And if you are, then we'll move forward with preparing a grant application with the intent to submit prior to the due date. Then it would be April of '24 when those grants are awarded. We believe that because this is a critical project identified on the watershed plan, that this has a high likelihood of being approved for the 319 grant. If approved, then for the next year, there's design work. While we've got a plan in place that you've seen there, there's actually a lot more design work that goes along with that, along with permitting that would, that would need to happen. So, that would take place from right around May through the following spring, March of '25. Starting in March of '25, we begin that process of the invasive tree and shrub removal. That would take place over a couple, three months. And then, through late spring, summer, and the fall would be all of that other work of the stream and bank restoration, the native seeding, and placement of the erosion control. Then what happens is that sleep, creep, leap process over a few years that would take place. And included in this proposal actually is some of that maintenance costs over those first three years to be able to ensure that this project takes off in the way that we would anticipate that it would. So, the left-hand side gives you a little bit of, you know, detailed breakdown as to what's included in the probable cost. And without getting into too much detail, there's the design and permitting cost, followed by the site prep costs, earthwork, erosion control, and then the ongoing seeding and management that would happen over time. So, about an $800,000 project. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McWilliams to talk a little bit about the permaculture project that I referred to.
So, as Dr. Byrne had mentioned, there are two portions of this. There is the environmental side of it, and there is the permaculture side of it, or the plant side of it. So, Adrian Salu, who's with us tonight and introduced himself, has done quite a bit of work with our teachers, that's his expertise, to try to blend the restoration with the agricultural portion of this. So, his plan really pulls those two things together and honors both of them. So, here's a basic design. And so, one of the things that I'd like to point out with this is that this is a phaseable project. So, if you really start in the center of the map there, you'll see that there's a food production area. And I would say that that would be the beachhead, so to speak, that that's where we would start. And then slowly work our way out to transition from that real formal gardening space to a space that has some native trees, but you do some agriculture underneath of them in the forms of nuts and berries and other production items that grow underneath those tree areas. And then you slowly work your way out from agriculture to complete restoration. So, it's a transition from the center to the outside of it. I think one of the really cool things about this proposal is the shape. It's kind of shaped like a seed. And if you speak with Adrian and you speak with our teachers, one of the things that they really wanted to try to emphasize was honoring the, the shape of the land. So, looking at the contours and using that as a means to help support water conservation, and using this, the shape to determine where the best place to put certain items might be. So, there's a lot of thoughts. And the land really says, this is the best place for this component or that component. A couple of other pieces that you'll notice on there, there are some instructional places, yurts that are out in this space. So, as we start to build towards a permanent project, that would be one of the things that we would look at is having some, some structures out there for students and community members to, to use as well. So, just giving you an idea of a, of a plant layout, you can see that there are quite a few trees that are involved in this. And Adrian and our teachers have been talking about ways to, show some things that you could do as a, as a home gardener. You know, what, what can you grow underneath of your backyard that may be fully under shade? And really trying to understand the different environments that exist within not just our little planting area, but those same conditions may exist in your own home or in your future home, or in some other space that you want to perform some agriculture, but also some conservation. And then, just to give you some ideas there as you look at what the production would look like, we're definitely interested in advancing the farm-to-table concepts, trying to connect the, the garden concept or the agriculture to what we're doing with our culinary arts area as well. So, and maybe even using some of this as a production space for Quest Food Service. So, ultimately, the, the hope would be to develop an area that is almost self-funding or actually produces some revenue to be able to put back into the space and continue to build the space out. So, whether that be through selling our produce to Quest or offsetting some of the items that we might have to purchase through our perculinary arts area, this, this could be a space for us to do that as well. So, one of the things that I would say, as I've mentioned to this, is I think that there are some opportunities to build some partnerships with not just the educational foundation, but as I look at that design, there are several trees out there. And I'm sure that we could work with our community to develop a tree donation process and really work with those that are interested in building this space out to, to bring in a lot of the components that make up the landscape and the, and the greenscape within that area, so.
All right. So, now we are to the questions and discussion, and we have two guiding questions for the Board to consider and talk through tonight. So, the first one, do we have the green light, Guinness? For the continuation of green learning initiatives, including both the career pathway, as well as the permaculture project? And then, thinking through the, assuming that there is a successful grant award, is the Board willing to dedicate further resources for the restoration project?
And Board, not to put the second question first, but I will just remind you that, that there are funds available in the Capital Projects Fund. There are resources there that are available, that we could use to be able to fund this. And I believe that once we got to the end of that three-year timeline on a completed project on the ecological restoration, that there is sufficient time for the district to be able to plan for what I think would be very manageable, ongoing maintenance costs in out-years. And there's certainly enough runway to be able to plan for that without a problem.
Is, it's all amazing. And is the permaculture project included in your budget?
No.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry. So, the $300,000 or so that we're talking about, that is, that is inflation-adjusted for 2026, correct?
That, I, I can go back to exactly the assumptions as that was prepared by Baxter and Woodman.
Okay.
That was, I, I don't know exactly how they costed that out with the anticipation in the future and what, what their assumptions were. So, I don't have the detail on that.
Okay.
But you can get back to us.
Certainly.
So, timeline-wise, with students, how soon would students be able to be involved in that restoration project? Would it be 2025 or more? Would there be some opportunities sooner than that?
I won't speak to this restoration project, but we are engaged with Citizens for Conservation and the Dreamway right now in a pretty significant restoration project along the creek bed on the school side of things. So, this spring, we planted 4,000 plants. Last, last year, I think we planted 8,000 plugs. We've been growing plants that went into some of the spaces in our greenhouse. Students have been preparing those. Our teachers were just out watering yesterday. They've got their, their, their pump, pumping water out of the creek and making sure that everything's, you know, staying green and healthy. And so, so we're engaged in that. There's a, a space over by Field of Dreams that we're looking at, maybe engaging in this summer and into the fall. So, we've got some work to kind of bridge us towards the restoration piece. I would say that in terms of the permaculture piece, we would like to have permission to get started on that as soon as possible. So, we have been doing some courtyard work that kind of mimics some of the permaculture techniques. But to really be able to get into the space and start with that centralized production garden would be, would be of high interest to us.
So, great. And the, so the idea for the yurt? I'm actually really excited about the possibility of a BHS yurt and the branding. That would be used as a classroom, then?
Yeah. Learning space. Learning space, a shelter. It's, it's pretty sparse out there in terms of tree and shade right now. So, to have a space to be able to go into and cool off and get out of the sun, I think will be important in terms of instruction and just using the space at this point.
Lots of possibilities for BHS yurt. And then, you said ongoing maintenance costs. We're not sure what those would be yet.
That's correct. And when we take a look at the estimate over the, over the initial three years, we're, we're talking low-five-figure costs.
Low-five figures? Okay.
But there is an intention that we think it could be self-funded, correct? Is that what I heard?
To be self-funded.
For the gardening, I think, can be self-funded. You know, I, I do think that it's something that Dave and I have talked about, and Dr. Byrne have talked about quite a bit, about, you know, trying to, to look at how do we maintain some of these spaces that we're working on? How do we utilize our staffing, both instructionally and in terms of just having that, that green thumb to be able to manage the greenhouse, manage the production spaces? So, it is something that we're looking at and considering, like, how do we adjust our staffing at the high school to, to meet the needs that could also help to maintain these spaces? Certainly with student interns and our teaching staff as well.
I see. Okay.
And so, like, during the, during the ribbon-cutting of Field of Dreams, I said this several times, that every space is a classroom. Every space is a learning space. Every space is a learning space. This is a learning space. So, when we talk about environmental science and we talk about restoration and maintaining healthy environments, to be able to go out there and, and do it, and then actually be able to do some real-life experiments with permaculture and redeveloping soil layers and the, the biome within the soil, these are things that we do a great job showing it on, on slideshows and in books. But for students to be able to actually get out there and get dirt under their fingernails and, you know, watch the worms and see the, see the change happen, that's, that's part of the maintenance, but it's part of the education as well.
Okay. That's great. Perfect. Thank you.
So, I think, I, I, the project's amazing and super exciting. And I feel like the permaculture project is just as important as the restoration project. Is there a separate budget going to be made? Or do you plan on it being funded through selling trees? And, or how are you paying for it?
So, that, so the initial piece of that, permaculture piece, that centralized garden, the real expensive piece is not, and it's not all that expensive, is a deer fence.
Yeah.
So, you, the, the key to permaculture is you use recycled material that some people see as waste. So, round-up leaves and compost and straw and to help build the soil up. So, it is pretty cost-effective in terms of that. So, have a-
Just setting up the-
You have a building, a yurt.
Well, yeah. But I mean, I get how this can be an ongoing thing.
Exactly.
Stuff, I, I would love it. I, I agree with you. I would want it to be starting right away, so. It's the fencing.
If, if we need the fencing to start with. I mean, that might be a, something that we build into next year. So, you know, budget-wise, we could look at it with, with our budget from, from the high school and say, you know, this is a priority for us and work with buildings and grounds to figure out what that would cost and is a duel.
Kind of like a gravel parking lot. I'm certainly near not, hey, I mean, there's some really cool things out there and that you have ideas about. Okay.
I think some of these are really going to evolve over time. And some of these may, as Mr. McWilliams said, may be covered through the operating, annual operating budget. Some of these may be particular requests that come back to the Board for authorization to be able to spend money out of the Capital Projects Fund to be able to support some other larger improvements in the area. Although, I, I wasn't sure if you were serious or joking about the sponsor of a tree, but that's actually a viable-
I think it's a great idea.
It's a viable plan to be able to solicit donations. And we believe that-
Or a yurt. Yurts. I think that will go over well. Because of your, your brand name.
When, when you look at who's in the audience tonight, you can see that, you know, there are people that came out here during the, you know, in the summer, took time to support this presentation and to engage with the Board on this. And I think this is the tip of the iceberg. I think there is a lot of community support from some great groups and individuals that live in our area that would love to see this work happen and would be excited to be able to support us as we navigate some of those questions about, how do we pay for a couple of components here to be able to make that happen? In particular, on the permaculture side, that is absolutely things that, there may be grants or private funding that would be able to support that. On the, the restoration side, this is really just good for our community and for our earth, and really part of the sustainability priority that we have. So, there is some, I believe, small ongoing costs associated with that. But that also preserves the district's ability to be able to use that space in the future for other programs that might be suitable over time, and to be able to continue the great educational program we provide for our students and our community.
So, just something I missed. I apologize, Dr. Winkelman. But one of the things that you've emphasized, and it's awesome, is we've got a path, and we've got, we've got a crosswalk now. So, up until just this spring, we didn't have a way to get from the school side of the, of the street to the property that we want to work on. And it's there now. So, we've got a path that leads right up to it. There's a dedicated crosswalk. So, you know, the parking lot isn't as important as it was maybe even three months ago.
Right.
Right.
Parking lots, pedestrian bridges. We've had different ideas, but the fact that there is that sidewalk and that signal mile there for pedestrians is a huge piece that we didn't have. We've been talking about this property in the past. And I think it's important for the Board also to, Mr. McWilliams mentioned it, but, you know, our Ed Foundation over the last several years has had a real interest in partnering with, with us. And when you think about DeeDee Womburg, who was one of the founding members of the Ed Foundation, you know, the Womburg family, I want to note, also donated this property.
Most of it.
Well, most of it.
Some of it. Quite a bit, really a lot of it.
Yeah. To, to the district to make this possible. And I, and I think the Ed Foundation would be a group that could help support, in addition to capital funds, different tree ideas and so forth for us to be able to, you know, realize some of these things. I really do think there's, there's a lot of opportunity with this project.
It's amazing. It's amazing.
I, I think there's a lot of support in the community and certainly from the Board.
We, we talked a few minutes ago, like, what, what does it look like when we start to do some of our Framework 220 work? And what could these, you want to talk about what that could look like? The last year. This is it. You've got local experts, you've got passionate community members, you've got local organizations, you've got educators, all really working together to try to realize something as a, a value to the district and the community. So, I, I see us replicating what we've, we've done here this past year as we embark on some new areas.
I'm so excited that we have the community involved. I think that's, that's going to really make it so successful.
I do. I'm, this is kind of my thing. So, I'm, I'm kind of an outdoorsy. I like this stuff. But when I, when I turn the corner on Hart Road from the railroad track and we go by Hamilton Gardens, you know, I, I can drive by in the morning and I can picture this, this whole area done, complete and restored. You know, driving by the creek bed or even walking down the creek bed and looking to the east towards the school from the new bridge and seeing all of the different wildflowers growing and seeing that function well. It, we saw a little bit of it last year, and it's awesome. It's going to be tremendous if we can continue on this path. And I, I think it is a, a real, a real gem for our community, honestly, to be in such a- And I think it is a real gem for our community, honestly, to be in such a visual area of the community to be able to have this opportunity. It's really exciting. So thanks for allowing us to present and share the idea.
I just have a question too.
I have a couple of questions too.
So, you know, being on the facilities committee, when we talked about this land more for like athletic use, you shared a lot of red flags and obstacles, the fact that it's Barrington Hills and Barrington, the fact we have to deal with the neighbors and permitting. Do you think there'll be a lot less of that with this kind of a project?
Absolutely.
In terms of dealing with those issues?
Right, absolutely, because we get to use the property essentially as it is. We're not having to worry about doing special lighting. We're not having to worry about grading the property. Now, we will have to work with neighbors on this and get their okay to be able to do some of this work, which would occur on their property. But we believe that there is support and there's support within the community to help us get that support from those property owners to be able to do this. So we think this is actually significantly easier than trying to do other development on there as had been contemplated some years ago.
So think this will be a much easier sell?
Much easier.
Okay. Good to hear.
Is this the entirety of the parcel, including the top portion by Hart on Lake Cook? Would this be restoring the entire or is there a portion or not such?
No, it is all of the property we own along with some small portions of some adjacent property.
So it goes all the way up against Hamilton Park?
Yes.
So, yeah, just piggybacking on what Barry was saying, because I remember we've talked in the past that the Barrington Hills portion lighting would be an issue for any kind of something. And the village of Barrington portion towards the railroad tracks would be more buildable or usable if we had other ideas of what to do over there. So I guess personally, I love this idea. I think it's amazing. But as the rest of the community, you know, who may not be as green as all of us in this room today, I guess, would we, as a board, consider other things for this property to play devil's advocate? This, to me, seems like it goes with our strategic plan. It goes with restoration. It goes with a lot of things that Barrington is about. But I know we had, it's forty acres. It's a lot of space. Would we for sure want to use all of the space for this conservation or would we want to keep some of the space available for some other options?
Well, so, Lee, I'm glad you brought that up.
You know, just to play devil's advocate.
We focused on the restoration, improving the property, getting it back to its natural state. We focused on the northern end where we would use it for the educational purposes. The southern end of the property would be restored. There would be those native seeds and so forth and seeding down there, but it still does provide an opportunity down the road to use that space for other purposes. We haven't defined all of it for educational spaces. We're really highlighting that northern end of the property up towards Hamilton Partners as where we would do some of the educational experiences. But there is the portion down towards Lake Cook Road where we're restoring it. We're not developing it in any way beyond plan.
It could be developed in the future. And actually, it's been a part of the conversation with the committee that had been meeting, talking about options for ecological restoration. And a key point always was that we want to be able to preserve the board's option to be able to do things that might be important for our educational programming at some point in the future. And what we're proposing does exactly that. So there's still the opportunity to develop the land in the future if the board were to decide there was a need to build something or develop something in a different way.
And slide twenty-seven. I don't know if you want to put it back up there, but slide twenty-seven shows some of that potential as well. There it was. Oops.
Tell me what is that? Well, that's the perma.
Look, talks about future development.
Oh, I don't know either.
So do, I know we're the first district to have agriculture. Is anybody else in the country doing anything like this or anywhere? I mean, because this is really exciting and to see what others have done.
Well, as it relates to the career pathway endorsement, we're the first. And so this is an area, and maybe Lucas can speak to this too, being from ISB. We, it's my belief that we're really leading the way in this area. Lucas, do you have anything to add?
You're the first with the college and career pathway endorsement to be added to a transcript. There are three hundred and sixty other high schools in the state that are, that have courses in agriculture, food and natural resources of some kind. There are about a dozen schools in northeast Illinois that are doing food production on, not on the scale that is being proposed or in the style that's being proposed. Evanston is essentially the big leader with two schools in Chicago, Gary Comer Charter School and Chicago High School Flex Sciences. They're doing a lot of food-based production at their schools and mostly serving food for their communities. Evanston grows food for their school cafeteria. But yours would be the first that is heavily designed around the permaculture production method. Most of the rest use very traditional gardening methods, like you'd see in the backyard. So nationwide, this is, I would still categorize this as a very unique endeavor. And the teacher in me is so jealous of the fact, the opportunity that your teachers have to grow across the street. You don't have opportunities to do field ecology and restoration and maintenance, ongoing maintenance, by walking across the street. That never happens. So because most of our schools have been developed around. So as a teacher, it's a very rare opportunity to get to do that. And you're infusing students' experiences into the management of your campus facilities. And that is a rare and unique experience. You're giving students career skills and getting them and their families physically involved in the work of preparing and maintaining this environment. As you look at global population increases, you look at climate change, students need to be prepared to think about the careers and the opportunities that are going to exist. And this, you will be one of the few schools that is doing specifically this in the nation. Definitely be one in Illinois right now.
How do we come to permaculture? I love permaculture, but it's, when you try to learn about it, there's not that as much out there as other ways of plants and growing food, you know? How do we get to that?
Well, we educated Adrian here in Barrington. And then he stayed and engaged with us to be able to bring those concepts.
Awesome.
So I've only been a part of like a little bit of it, but with our staff, our environmental science staff, you know, I've walked in on a couple of pretty heated debates about do you till or don't you till? And so there's, they're trying to practice what they preach and, you know, Adrian's got a ton of experience in his partners that he works with. So that's really where it's coming from is, you know, we've got to show the students what is possible, right? And how you can do things.
And the state is developing curriculum right now, at this moment, in sustainable food production. So there's a whole new course and curriculum resources that the state will be providing. So it will essentially be one of the first schools to get to use it.
How do we maintain it over the summer when, you know, there's not as many students? Is it summer school? I mean, I remember the garden at North Barrington, the garden, it rose and it was, you know, elementary schools and there were families who loved it and then they would age out of it and it'd be like, oh, who's going to water it this summer? You know? What are we going to do about that? How does that work in this situation?
So Steve asked that question earlier about, you know, what staffing does it take? And I think we've been looking at that with the buildings and ground staff to really analyze even the greenhouse. And at some point, we are going to have to look at what we do staffing-wise and make some adjustments to be able to support some of the programming that we're doing. So we've got some thoughts on what could happen with that. We just aren't at a stage right now where we need to make that next step or take that next step in terms of maintaining these spaces. We're getting close, you know? We'd like to have a twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five greenhouse. We can't depend on our teachers to do that. They just don't have the time with curriculum development in the summers. So that's a piece of it. And then, you know, all of these other properties that, or the other pieces that we're looking at, we will need to have somebody that can work with interns to be able to manage those and keep them up. So it is something worth thinking about, looking at what we do in our staffing model to help support that.
Excellent. Well, two green thumbs up here. Win, win, win. Win, win. There's five, you know, wins on there. So that's really great. It's really exciting. Makes me want to go back to high school a little bit.
Yeah, definitely.
And thanks to everybody that's here, the community engagement, and thank you for acknowledging that Womberg family would make sure that we recognize them as we build this out as well.
Well, thank you, board. We're excited then with your support to move forward with both of us.
So we're green thumbs up on both questions, right?
Green thumbs up.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. But nobody leave. There's more exciting stuff to come in our next discussion. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so next on our agenda is to have an equity update. Don't move, Dr. Burn.
Yeah, Dr. Rose.
Hopefully you're comfortable.
Are you okay there? Do you want to sit here?
Good. Stay right there.
All right, are we ready?
Let's do it.
All right. Thank you again for having us both up here tonight. Nate and I are here to share with you an update on our work as it relates to equity and diversity. So again, bringing us back to our why with our mission statement of empowering personal excellence in every learner. And the purpose of our presentation tonight is to develop an understanding of our current diversity and equity work and the alignment to strategic planning as well as professional development as we move forward. Tonight's presentation is in alignment with all six of our strategic priorities. However, we are going to hone in on one particular priority area tonight, which is inclusive education. And before I hand it off to Nate, I would like to spend a couple of minutes explaining to the board how our equity work aligns with everything that we do and it's not something separate. When we think of one of our main goals as a district, it's to ensure that all of our learners have access to our core curriculum at every level from pre-K to twelve-plus. And we ensure that we are able to have access to students, their core, regardless of the services that they receive or the programs that they're engaging with. So that could be our extended services programming, our multilingual learner programming and services, our multi-tiered systems of support or interventions that students receive, special education supports, dual language as well as Chinese immersion. So how are we able to do that? That's through our strategic planning process with our priorities, our mission statement and as well as our learner profile and core beliefs. It's also done through our supervisory process, which we'll talk about here in just a couple of minutes with the Danielson framework. And it's also accomplished through guaranteed and viable professional learning for our staff.
Thanks, Melissa. Speaking of our strategic plan, our alignment with our equity race and cultural diversity efforts are aligned to the inclusive education that you see before you and in particular the objective of professional development. Dr. Winkelman earlier talked about some of our planning teams. Our inclusive education planning team will be led by Teresa Reiki, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, who's also celebrating her birthday today. Did that? So, both folks, right? So 2023 has really, really been about, just again, building capacity in our district. You know, last year, we did a lot of work with our administration, talking about leading for equity, focusing on the cultural proficiency continuum and how to utilize that to lead. This year's work has been focused a lot on building capacity through our district via our building-level equity cohorts, which we have in each of our buildings. Court members developed a deeper understanding of equity race and cultural diversity and the daily practices needed to develop the will, skill and capacity to sustain and support our work. Next, I'm going to talk a little bit about the evolution of our supervisory process in Barrington. And when we talk about our supervisory process, I want you to think about our supervisory task force committee. That task force committee, which I know that you're all very much aware of, is a combination of both our administrative staff and our teaching staff who've been collaborating together. Okay? I'll get back to a little bit of that in a minute. So as it relates to the supervisory process in Danielson, it's important to know that our Danielson framework for teaching is the tool that we've been using to evaluate teachers in District Barrington 2020. We are currently using the 2013 version of that Danielson model. The Danielson group actually launched a revised version of that framework in twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, making revisions to the four domains aligned to our six clusters and themes. As our supervisory task force has gotten together, they have made the recommendation as the fall of this twenty-three coming in, that we would switch to this revised framework that has a little bit more equity and cultural diversity that is listed within those components. So at this time, I'm going to turn it back over to Melissa to talk a little bit more about our framework for teaching and clusters and all of that good stuff.
Sure. Thank you. So the Danielson framework clusters are really the companion to the framework for teaching. And when we say framework for teaching or the Danielson model, what we're really referring to in short is the four domains. So the framework clusters are that overarching umbrella. So the six clusters are clarity and accuracy, learning environments, classroom management, intellectual engagement, successful learning as well as professionalism. And so when we think about those overarching clusters, there are six themes that are embedded into the rest of the Danielson framework, which you can see the six themes on the screen. And we'll probably say the word domain several more times throughout the course of the presentation. And when we say domains, there are four domains in the Danielson framework, which are planning and preparation, learning environments, learning experiences, as well as principal teaching. So we have done a lot of heavy lifting this year, working with our staff members to build their capacity so that everybody is ready to hit the ground running in the fall of 2023 with the revised framework. So we have spent the past year developing common performance indicators as it relates to the four domain areas. So we have spent the year working with multiple groups of folks who include the district equity team, the building equity cohorts at each of our buildings, as well as the supervisory task force. So each of those groups went through a process to develop performance indicators, or in other words, look fours, for what this looks like in the classroom setting at all of our levels. And so when each of these groups were finished, we brought together a small administrative team to develop one common set of performance indicators that we'll use next year and beyond. So this is a screenshot of what the side-by-side comparison looks like with our performance indicators. And I'll later in the presentation show you where this is housed on our district website. So if you look on the column to the far left, that is the Danielson 2013 version. And so what you see here is domain one out of the four. And then the middle column is the revised Danielson framework from 2022 for domain one. And then the far right column is our internal performance indicator. So this is a compilation of the work of the group. So the district equity team, the building equity cohorts, as well as the supervisory task force, coming together to develop these important look fours. And so you might be thinking, well, what does this look like in the context of a classroom? So I know that this is a lot of words on a screen, so I would like to draw your attention to component one B. And if I had a laser pointer, I'd point it right here. So one B is knowing and valuing students. So when we think about, well, what does it mean to know and value students? It means respecting students' identities, understanding current knowledge and skills, and really that whole child perspective. So specific as it relates to Barrington 220 and what some of our staff members are currently doing. As it relates to the elementary level, one specific example from one of our elementary staff members is that she utilizes feedback from other teachers, parents, as well as students to gather additional information about all of her students in order to appropriately plan for instruction on that individual level. Because we have common curriculum maps, we want to make sure that, going back to that original slide, all of our students being able to access the core curriculum. And this particular staff member also makes sure that she's engaging school teams, outside providers, as well as various related service providers to make sure that we're supporting students appropriately so that they can design appropriate instructions so that our students are accessing the core curriculum. And as it relates to a middle school and high school example, speaking to that same component of knowing and valuing students, one example at the middle school and high school that we've seen this year is I... school that we've seen this year is identity mapping. So this is, this is likely done or often done at the beginning of a semester or a trimester where teachers engage in a process of students being able to share and reflect on aspects who, that shape who they are, so that teachers can, again, appropriately plan for instruction, knowing and valuing students. I'm passing it back off to you. Sorry, receeded. Thank you.
So the next slide just deals with professional development. Now, I know that, you know, we do a lot of work in the summer. We also recognize too that staff, you know, take some time off in the summer. But we have this summer, summer university model that we've been talking a lot about in the teaching and learning department of how we can maximize not just the summer, but also the fall, winters, and spring, right? And so what you see before you is a small sample of how we're trying to do that. In the spring, we talked a little bit about our building equity cohorts and the rollout that we did for our staff May 3rd to, to, to introduce the revised Danielson framework. This summer, we'll do some summer universities. That leads into new educator orientation. In the fall, we've got open institute days and personalized learning. And then obviously, we'll target professional development as, as we find about, more about what people are exactly needing in that, in the, in the, in the fall and the spring of next year. This here is a shameless plug for the professional development that I will be leading this summer, which is called Applying an Equity Lens to the Danielson Framework. There's three levels of courses offered in June and July. Teachers and staff are happy opportunity to go through level one, two, and three. There's a sequence to that. But again, this is all about providing them an opportunity to engage and have a deeper understanding about how they can leverage the new Danielson framework into their classroom and teaching practices. Happy to say that those are, as we say, sold out at the time. So I look forward to actually having more of these as, you know, and again, in the fall and spring, we can do things a little bit differently as well. 2023, 2024 work of our district equity team will be focused a lot on three particular items. The revised Danielson framework that we've been talking about tonight, the strategic priorities and objectives, those things that are focused on inclusive education. Be certain that there's be some work there. And then as well, the equity journey continuum that I introduced to you this past fall. In addition to that, our building equity cohorts will be designed to support staff members in, in their respective buildings, working with their principals to provide additional professional learning for staff that need it. And then as we continue to get feedback from staff, we're going to be able to curtail a lot more of that development to the things that are bubbling up for them. As I, before I turn it back over to Melissa to land the plane, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank publicly Ben Rodriguez back there and Nina Idrizi, two of our leaders from our high school that are going on to bring your pastors. They have been very instrumental as I got here, learning about the work that we're doing, not just in the district, but at the high school. So big shoes to fill. Really, really appreciate the work that they've done with us.
All right. And one more update that we are very excited to announce. We've made several updates to our Barrington 220 equity website. And we understand that when we talk about the Danielson framework and the framework clusters and the domains, that's a lot of information to take in. And we know and realize that people want to digest it and maybe go back for a deeper dive and to learn on, on their own time. So we have on both the equity website, as well as our human resource page, developed a couple paragraphs that explain what, what the Danielson framework is and how it's used in our district. So that first red underline is a link to the overarching Danielson framework that was published by the Danielson Group. And then the second link right there, this is a screenshot, so it's not a live link or else I'd click on it. That would take you to the side-by-side Danielson framework comparison or the performance indicators that we stepped through tonight. So that's accessible to all of you and the public as well. And then the four buttons on the side, there were three buttons. So the equity statement, the equity FAQs, as well as equity resources. And we have just recently added a district equity team button. And if you click on that, it'll say more resources coming soon. And that will soon become the landing page for our district equity team, where folks can see information as it relates to the work that the district equity team is doing. So agendas, appropriate materials will all be housed there in the future.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
More questions, comments?
Are other districts doing this work?
As it relates to the Danielson framework, so I'll let you tell the story in a, in a minute, but we are, I, I know I use the phrase leading the way a lot, especially in the past several presentations, but this is an area where Barrington-
Don't be shy about that. Barrington 220, it's okay to say that.
Barrington is very much leading the way in implementing the revised Danielson framework. Colleagues of mine in other districts, I've been asking, well, what are you doing in implementing the revised Danielson framework? And they have not stepped through this process yet. So we're very fortunate to be so long down the road and being prepared to fully launch in the fall of 2023.
I've been very fortunate through the, through the work that I do with colleagues. Folks have gotten wind, one way or another, of the work that we've done. So I've had the opportunity to present to like the Illinois Partnership for Educational Equity, Equity Partnership with Northern Illinois Universities and actually present to superintendents and equity leaders that are doing this work. And it's, it's been nice for people to be jealous of our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, the direction that we're going as a board, having them having some understandings of, of some of our strategic planning and the, you know, the alignment that we're attempting to do. And then most importantly, the shift with the Danielson. This is the greatest thing since sliced bread for lots of folks, and people are, are chomping at the bit to get some of the information that we already have with Danielson because we've already had the partnership. So I've been really, it's been affirming to be able to go places and, and hear people want to hear more about what we're doing here at Barrington 220. It's been really nice.
Yeah. And just to add on to that, you know, we have a very talented teaching group here in the, in the district, and they want to improve their pedagogy and their practice in the classroom. And so when the Danielson framework came out, you know, it wasn't intended as an evaluation tool, although it became that for a lot of districts, right? In Illinois and nationally. But that interest of us, you know, moving forward is about improving our practice as educators. And there is a new framework that's available. It makes sense for us to also then look at the practices and the information in that framework and the reauthorization with that social emotional learning piece and the equity lens, which resonate with our strategic plan and our community and the feedback. And so it's another opportunity for us working through the supervisory process task force. It didn't surprise me at all that there was interest in our district to continue to make sure that we're doing what we can to improve our, our instruction.
It's really encouraging to hear that the appetite among our staff is really high for the professional development, that you're sold out on your, for, for summer PD. And also, Danielson is tailored toward our staff and educators, same with supervisory task force. I'm wondering, I know that we talked in the past about, you know, how to engage more families, more parents, community members who are interested in getting involved in our, our equity work and equity initiatives. How, where are we on that with regard to now and going into 2023? I know PTOs are also engaged in this discussion. So could you give us kind of a, yeah, just an overview of how things are moving? And I, I know that's a lot of pieces.
No, no, absolutely.
But I know that interest is high.
Yes, you're right.
So I'm actually going to start this one, and Nate can add on to this. So we're very excited to officially welcome Nate to the teaching and learning team and engaging him in the important work of the teaching and learning department. And family engagement actually falls under the teaching and learning department. So there are so many opportunities for us to really take a deep dive and figure out what are we currently doing with our parent universities? What's working? What isn't working? What other districts can we look to, to model after for how we can be engaging our families in all the work that we're doing as it relates to equity and curriculum and instruction and offering parent universities focus groups? There are a lot of different ways that we can be engaging our communities specific to, to equity work and beyond. So with Nate being officially a part of the teaching and learning team, we are going to step through that process as it relates to family engagement as a whole.
And I did a recon out to the Glenn Bart district, school districts. And I don't know if you know this, but Glenn Bart has an amazing parent university, just menu and variety. And I've really been able to make connections there. And I'd love to be able to talk more about some of the things that they're doing that and seeing how that could, we could leverage some of that here, because it certainly goes hand in hand with the work that they're doing, providing the parent universities to, you know, just, just provide some opportunities to provide some facts, just put out there, hey, this is what, what the work really is, and this is what it's looking like, and this is what it's going to look like in your classroom. So they've really created a great, robust system to do that, that was started. And so I think it's time for us, as we've been talking, and I've had this nice shift that, that gives me really an entryway into that work in a different space. So I look forward to working with the teaching and learning department to create those opportunities, not just at the district level, but as you're saying, at school levels with the partnering with the PTOs, because they've been incredibly interested in doing some of that work and engagement as well.
You know, I also think it comes down to building capacity as well, because we talked about tonight, building capacity of our entire staff over the course of the year when it comes to the Danielson framework. And we want to make sure that we're also building capacity of our community, because we understand that the entire community are educators. So we want to build their capacity and what makes sense about the Danielson framework to, and every, and everything else to the broader community. So it's family engagement as well as building capacity as well.
Just to add on to that, you know, we've talked about the strategic plan tonight. Obviously, there's going to be additional opportunities as we step into some of those objective areas to, again, create opportunities for our community to participate and engage. So in addition to the parent universities and the resources and literature and being able to provide more of that to our community, opportunities to get in the space and have conversations and help inform, I think is going to be important for our community.
So I, I appreciate the answer. I think it's great that we're going to involve our community, because I do think that's been a call on us to make sure that they are. But I'm sorry, did I, maybe I missed it. Did you have a tentative timeline for when those parent universities and, and the like might be available?
Yeah, so we're doing the work this summer internally to figure out what the needs are and how we're going, what we're going to launch in terms of our parent universities, et cetera.
Yeah.
For next year. So I, I would say you can expect an update in the fall.
So we'll expect an update in the fall, but not necessarily an opening at the, at this point?
No, some sort of parent universities in the fall.
Oh, okay.
But I'm just not in a place to tell you what those are going to be at this point.
And I didn't hear this part either, but is there an intention that there will be committees at the school level or possibly, I don't know, otherwise? So rather than just having input, but also being able to kind of help make the sausage, if you will?
Yeah, so we have the district equity team. And then addition, in addition to the district equity team, we also have the building level equity cohort. So the idea is that the district equity team does that initial learning, and then it's taken out to the building equity cohorts. And then eventually, the, it impacts the work everywhere, right? So right now, our structure is the district equity team and then the building equity cohorts.
And so, and who's composing the building equity cohort?
The coalition of the willing, yeah.
Yeah, interested teachers, yeah. Interested teachers that have reached out to their principals, that have been really interested in this work. And again, they were huge, in my humble opinion, in the rollout that we did on the May 3rd about helping folks understand the performance indicators. Part of the equity cohorts that I did this year, I also did some field work with them where in each of the buildings, we got together and they created performance indicators that were really related to what they actually did in their, in their actual buildings. And so besides the district template, there's also individual, individual ones that our cohorts have worked on that if they've shared with their teaching staff that have really, really been met with a, a great appreciation.
Sure. I think to, to add on to that too, you know, we're hearing the interest of participation.
Yes, that's where I'm going to go with this question.
Not a doubt. I hope the presentation tonight demonstrated how we're doing with our teaching staff, and specifically, a lot of the information is about helping professional development in an organized fashion, working in conjunction with our teachers, right? We're starting to preview how we're making things more visible and accessible in our community through our website and access to those things. We've outlined a few opportunities tonight of how people can engage. I think the next step then is to also create those ongoing ways to engage. And we'll provide that and give more detail to the board and ask for more, you know, guidance with that in the future. I don't, I don't want to portray that we've got it all figured out just with the presentation tonight.
Some of the design.
More to come.
So maybe this isn't decided yet? But I guess where, what I'm, where my head is at and what I'm hearing a lot from colleagues and parents alike is for both the district equity team, as well as the building cohorts, it would be nice if, even if their parents aren't necessarily allowed to, let's call it participate, it would be nice for them to observe. Because I think when, when things like this are implemented and now after a fact, we're kind of sharing what the intention and what the objectives and what the actions are, it's already implemented and the parents didn't necessarily have-
I'm sorry, it's already?
It's already in, in action.
Okay.
So parents don't necessarily have the ability to react. It's already, you know, kind of there. So I don't, I don't know if that resonates, but that's kind of what I'm hearing. And I think it is important for us to at least be cognizant of that.
Yeah, and we, like Dr. Winkelman said, we have heard that feedback. And one step that we are taking is adding additional transparency into our website, having a button right on the website for the district equity team. So folks at any point in time can go and see the agenda and any related materials.
Oh, okay. Okay. Uh, you know, I'm sorry, I missed that agenda, Mark. That's good to hear. That's great.
So those will all be on the website.
Presentations.
Yeah. Okay.
Can you clarify? Sorry.
Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. Just, and I'm reading a lot about the Danielson method. Can you, so maybe it's both. Is it both helping teachers, educators become better educators? And then also providing a tool for which supervisors could evaluate? So is this part of their end of the year, like you did a bang-up job? Or, yeah?
Yep. So the Danielson, so the framework for teaching is the four domains that we talked about, that is what we use internally as our evaluation model. So the supervisory task force, that's the group of administrators and teachers who determine what the evaluation model is. And so it's been determined by that task force that this is the evaluation model. So we're using those rubrics to, yes, evaluate teachers, but also help them improve their craft.
And so then when, when we heard that, I mean, it was a natural progression for our building equity cohorts to want to support, you know, that work in the buildings in the district and their colleagues as we were shifting to this new model. So that's why the performance indicators were very, very important, because people can actually have something tangible that they can look at. And then again, if they have questions on any, any of the particular indicators, that's a signal to us to know how to prepare more professional development for them moving forward.
Good question.
Wanting to take it the next step? This is part of the state of Illinois evaluating school districts, like falls under and falls under, right? Because as a school district, we'll be evaluated on the Illinois State Report Card next year as to how we're doing as a district.
The equity journey continuum, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And so evaluating the staff is a piece of that puzzle.
Yep.
That, that we're going to be evaluated on.
I didn't have a question. I was going, just going to double down on your, I think communication and transparency is so important. And so I appreciate the work that you guys are doing to start doing that. Because I think the more you communicate out the work that you're doing, I'm hoping it'll help NIPUS in a way that the community feels a little bit more brought in to the, to the story. You know what I mean? I think some, I think some of the questions are probably around not having that visibility and feeling like it's a little protected. So the more you can kind of push out, this is the work we're doing, this is how we're integrating it, there's no intention to bring standards down. It's really about elevating achievement. I think that really helps tell the story and help bring the community along on that. So I appreciate what you guys are thinking about that.
I did notice the new FAQ sheet as well on the equity page, and I hope that's helpful. And you have one more question around. I know that this past year, you, Nate, partnered with principals at various schools to, you talked to our elementary, especially about, you know, kindness and words and things like that. And that, to me, seems like it could dovetail really well with some of our SEL. And where are we with that in terms of looking at best practices and discussing, you know, words and kindness with our students and how that integrates into SEL, like, with regard to diversity and respecting cultures and identities? Could you give us a little bit of a lens there?
Sure, start.
Yeah, I'll start. So we are actually stepping into the second year of our curriculum review process for social emotional learning. I think it was either the last meeting or the meeting before where we gave a student services and teaching and learning update as to where we're at within that process. So if you recall, the first year of the process, which was the 22, 23 school year, that is the research phase, research and learn. And then the second year is the development phase. So we're going to continue to step through that process of reviewing the best practice, reviewing different programs and resources and making, and Nate also sits on that team. And so all of that work will be done with that team, and it's representative of folks from pre-K 12 plus.
So there's continued learning opportunities for our students around diversity and with regard to social emotional as well, like follow that?
We've been at all together.
Okay. Okay.
Excellent. All right.
Any other questions?
Well, I'm really, just to celebrate Pride Month again, you know, I'm really proud of this work and thank you so much for your time and thanks for your patience in waiting for this presentation here in June.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I do not have another question.
Now, there's still lots of excitement to come. Board, we have policy to go through next, so don't go anywhere. Let's dive into a first reading of board policy. There's a bunch of them here. What have we got, eight?
Yes.
You want to give us a quick overview?
I will.
I think there's two groupings, right?
There are.
There's the faith law grouping and then the other two.
Yep, the first six are for a major change that's happening, and it's faith law, which starts and is effective July first. What that is, is both public and non-public Illinois school districts are now mandated to conduct employment history reviews for all employees, contractors, substitutes, and individuals who work directly and are in contact with students. Anyone who was hired after July first, twenty twenty-three, this needs to be completed. And the new process is intended to strengthen safeguards and combat sexual misconduct in schools. So that's the first six that we'll go through. And then the other two major that we'll go through are meeting procedures for the board and then library media programs. So with that, we can move into the first six and go through those. And I can answer any questions along with Erin and Diana, so. So the first one, two, one, one, zero, qualification, terms, duties of board officers. Really what these are going through is what the responsibilities, they outline what the responsibilities are for the board president, the superintendent, or designee, and how to incorporate the new EHRs. So if you look on the first page, not only are we still going to continue to do background checks and reference checks, but we are going to add this to employment history, where we go back and we look at any employment history that an individual had that worked directly with students. And they have to answer questions themselves, and then their former employees have to answer questions.
All right, board, any questions? Can we move this one to second reading?
We can't go back retrospectively and look at established employees in terms of, you know, maybe somebody who came on last year-
Correct.
-kept that information.
Well, we could potentially, but it really, the law indicates anyone that's hired after July first. Okay, four sixty, purchases and contracts. And this is just the law pertaining to any contracts or vendors that we have. So they have to complete that, and we have to work with them to make sure that they have their processes to complete their EHRs.
Any questions? Is it good to move this one to second reading? Sounds like it.
Okay, our hiring process and criteria. We have a process ready to be put into place starting July first, but that's just adding the EHR there and what we have to do in HR land in order to hire our individuals.
Is it good to move to second reading?
So do you, your group have to do all these EHRs, or does the employee have to get notice from their previous?
It's almost a two-way situation where we signed with software called Verifint, where they will be able to conduct the searches for us and send out with emails and everything. So what we do is we start with the employee filling out their questions and answering them, and then giving us permission with all their former employees. And then we work with the system, and then it shoots it out. And as long as it's established and ready to go, or I'm sorry, not established, initiated, then we can start moving forward with the hiring process.
Okay, so I think we were good to move that one forward.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Five ninety, abused and neglected child reporting. That again adds those pieces in and the responsibilities of the superintendent and what the board needs to complete.
Should we be saying superintendent or designee?
I was wondering on the last one, too.
Yeah, I was just noticing that, too.
Yeah, we do. I missed that one last time.
With the board's permission, if we could add that and make sure that that's incorporated into second reading, because that is standard for us.
For all of them, not just this one.
Okay, wonderful.
So we're good for second reading on that one?
Okay, and then with that, five, one, five, zero, personal records. This allows us to manage their personal records and having the EHR information included in there.
All right, let's move that one to second. I'm listening for opposition at this point. Okay?
Okay, student teachers also fall into this. There's not too many difference, changes to this, it's just changing what the actual act is called. And so now it's called, and number three, they omitted the community notification law to Registration Act.
All right, there's no opposition. We'll move that one to second reading, that one being five, two sixty.
Wonderful, so that's it with our faith law. So then moving into two, 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 zero, Board of Education Meeting Procedures, I'm going to let Dr. Winkelman talk to this one.
So if you go to the section on page four of five, the update, and what we had a conversation with the group during policy committee was adopting language, you'll see it in the blue highlight, which means that that was a recommendation from our committee rather than press, which would normally be green. Really trying to be specific with when a member can participate that can't be physically present for the meeting. So by providing that twenty-four hour notice in advance and stating one of the three reasons listed above, it's really drawing attention that if someone finds themselves in a position where they can't physically participate in the meeting, that they use one of those three terms that are provided right in the policy to be specific about why they're not able to attend. That was the intent of us drawing attention to that and adding that language.
My memory is, wasn't it at least twenty-four hours if applicable, or if it's available? I mean, if a-
It does say that.
Unless advanced notice is impractical.
Right.
Impractical, oh, I see, afterwards, it says impractical.
We just added that clause.
Okay, okay, I see. You added that one.
Do we need to put something in here? Maybe I'm misinterpreting what the information we were given from the law firm about voting on whether someone can participate remotely?
Yeah, great question. So what we talked about during policy committee is that the guidance was to either participate by vote or to look for objections from the board on direction of whether the person, if they followed the advanced notice, they used one of the permissible categories. So what we discussed in policy committee was at the start of meeting, we find ourselves in this situation, the board president, before going into the agenda and getting into that, would state that the person followed the guidance, right? They provided the advanced notice, they used the correct category. And are there any objections from the board for this person to participate remotely? Which would satisfy the expectation that there was conversation before someone started participating at a meeting. That was a suggestion from policy. The guidance did also state that you could do a different version of that or something along the lines of voting.
But the word was clear, we don't need to vote.
You do not need to, you could see if there's any objection to it, to their participation.
Because it's not practical to have an action item.
Correct.
Make sure we use this word vote, you know, different ways, especially if it's someone that's just simply ill.
But the board is obligated to not gloss over that part of it, is to make sure that they're following the advanced notice, using the proper terminology, and that the board actually has a moment collectively to determine and discuss someone's remote participation.
And just as a reminder, a few months ago, we, as a board, approved that clause on number two, just to specify that that business would require the board member to be absent on the day of the board meeting. And so this just adds to what was suggested to us by Public Access Council and Legal to make sure we're listing one of those reasons, so.
All right, sounds good. Are we okay to move this forward for second reading? All right.
All right, and our last one, six, two, three, zero, library media program. The press updates here are aligned with our current procedures, but really, we already use this process. So it's updating in the green what press has added.
I don't want, so silence means we're okay to move it to second reading?
Yes.
Sounds good.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Policy check.
Exactly. Torched and balled, check.
All right, so last discussion item is our agenda items for June twentieth. We've got second reading of all that great board policy we just saw, the intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Barrington for fuel purchases, project change order for the doors at station, as well as the discussion item we talked about earlier on Barrington High School, flexible learning. Anything else anybody wanted to think about? Excellent. All right, Darian S, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, before we vote, let's just, in case you missed it, James Street, we're closing on Monday, just in case you missed that. I had to circle back to at least that one, but what a great, a lot of great updates.
Yeah, really.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, man.
Great construction. So all in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? All right, we are adjourned.
All right.